All right, you ready Ken?
We're ready.
Great, I'd like to call the Town of Matavia Planning Board meeting to order for Tuesday, August fifteenth. Stand what our pledge allegiance, John, can you do this?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great honor of the Constitution, one nation under our own legal and political liberties and justice for all.
All right, roll call please, Ken.
Paul Marquesi.
Yes.
Paul McCullough.
Here.
Don Partridge.
Here.
Steve Tanner. Brooks Holly. Brittany, here. Jennifer. John.
Here. All right, then we have two absent regular planning board members, so I'll designate, Brittany is a voting and participating member tonight. We had two sets of meeting minutes, one for the June sixth, twenty twenty-three public hearing for Countryside Apartments that you all should have received and reviewed. Any comments or corrections?
No.
Entertain a motion for approval.
Paul.
I'll say.
Other Paul? All right, opposed? All right, thank you. The second set of meetings were from the June twentieth, twenty twenty-three regular planning board meeting. Any comments or corrections for those? Entertain a motion for approval.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. This time, is there anybody from the public that wants to speak on any agenda items that isn't part of one of the Countryside Apartments or GNC Biogas? All right, first item on the agenda is Countryside Apartments. Dave Mazur, here tonight to kind of give a quick overview of the project.
I think there's an easel over there. Oh, that's... Total acreage is about thirteen, there's a little bit of wetlands that is not going to be entered. Billable on nine acres, seven buildings, six garage buildings, total of a hundred thousand square feet, eighty units. The eighty units will be broken down to twenty-four three bedrooms, twenty-eight, nine hundred square foot two bedrooms, and twenty-eight thousand twenty square foot two bedrooms. Some of the two bedrooms that are smaller square footage, those twenty-eight will be broken down to one bedrooms. Not sure if they'll be on first floor or second floor, but they'll be, they'll be a mix. The building allows us to, you know, move them around where we need them. So out of that twenty-eight, we're probably looking at fourteen will be one bedrooms. Be thirty-six garages. I don't remember the exact step, but I think it's, um, charging stations for our electric vehicles, fourteen, fourteen's outside garage, inside garage. So thirty-eight charging stations between townhouses and external parking, uh, charging stations. Little dog park. And, uh, that's really about it.
All right. Any questions?
No, I think we revealed last time, this is not a moving company.
Correct, no government financing, uh, this is market rate. Uh, we've built the exact same buildings that we're building here in multiple located locations. We currently manage and own approximately three hundred doors already. Majority of our demographics, if you broke it down, is, uh, these buildings lend themselves to retirees due to the fact that there's really, there's literally no steps from parking lot to first floor apartments. Um, so whatever age they are, they, you know, they come in and some stay for a long time and, uh, you know, for myself, they, you know, they can walk in and from a walker to a wheelchair, um, it's, it's capable of all that. And, uh, so demographic, going back to that, it's about fifty-two to fifty-three percent is retirees, the balance is professionals. The price point, um, we've given some literature out to the board before, uh, we're getting somewhat tentative pricing back, we're hoping we can sustain that price point. Um, it may have to move a little bit, but again, we understand it can't move tremendously because then we're not going to run it. So it's, it's this balancing of having something that the, the market can handle, um, but you're also not at eighty percent vacancy because that doesn't work either.
Okay, any other questions? We have on our agenda seeker review, subdivision review, uh, we do have to, uh, seek a special use permit for the project, uh, being in the plan unit development, uh, that was allowed by the Town Board as a use in the area for high density residential, uh, so we'll head that to our agenda and our real site plan review. Uh, we did seek lead agency, uh, from other agencies for the seeker, haven't received any, uh, responses that are negative for us being lead agency, so I'll entertain a motion to declare lead agency for Countryside Apartments.
So move.
Paul?
I'll say.
Roll call please, Ken.
Paul McCullough.
Yes.
Paul Marquesi.
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Brittany? Yes. Jonathan?
Yes. All right, well now we're going to do seeker review, we did receive the seeker launch warrant, part one, from the developer. I've asked Paul Marquesi to go over the, uh, part two tonight.
Okay, first question, impact on land, the proposed action may involve construction on, on or physical alteration of land surfaces of the proposed site. The answer is yes. The proposed, so, so once you do that, you have to go through the rest of the, uh, the questions of it, so. The proposed action may involve construction on land where the depth to the water table is less than three feet, no or small impact. The proposed action may involve construction on slopes of fifteen percent or greater, no or small impact. The proposed action may involve the excavation or removal of more than one thousand tons of natural material, no or small impact. The proposed action may involve construction that continues for more than one year or multiple phases, no, and, no or small impact as well. The proposed action may result in the increased erosion, whether from physical disturbance or vegetation, vegetation removal, no or small impact. The proposed action is or may be located within the coastal erosion hazard area, no or small impact. Impact on geneo- geological features, the proposed action may result in a modification or destruction of, or inhibit the access to any unique or unusual landforms, no. The impacts on surface water, the proposed action may affect one or more wetlands or other surface water bodies, the answer is yes. The proposed action may create a new water body, no or small impact. The proposed action may result in an increase or decrease of over ten percent more than the ten acre increase or decrease in the surface area of any body of water, the answer is no. The proposed action may involve dredging more than a hundred cubic yards, yards of material from a wetland or water body, no. The proposed action may involve construction within or adjoining a freshwater or tidal wetland or in a bed or banks of any other water body, the answer is no. The proposed action may create turbidity in water either from upland erosion runoff or disturbing bottom sediments, the answer is no. The proposed action may include construction of one or more intakes for withdrawal of water, uh, from the surface water, the answer is no. The proposed action may include the construction of one or more outfall for discharge of water to surface waters, the answer is no. The proposed action may cause soil erosion or otherwise create a source of stormwater discharge that may lead, lead to sil- silitation or other degradation of receiving, uh, water bodies, the answer is no. The proposed action may affect the water quality of any water bodies within the downstream of the site of the proposed action, the answer is no. The proposed action may involve the application of pesticides, pesticides or around, in or around any, uh, water body, the answer is no. The proposed action may require the construction of new or expansion of existing wastewater treatment facilities, the answer is no. Impact on groundwater, the proposed action may result in new or additional use of groundwater or may have the potential to introduce contaminants to groundwater or in aquifer, the answer is no. The impact on flooding, the proposed action may result in development of, of land subject to flooding, the answer is no. Impacts on air, the proposed action may include a state regulated air emission source, the answer is no. Impact on plants and animals, the proposed action may result in a loss of flora or fauna, the answer is no. Impact on agricultural resources, since this is taking up agricultural land, the answer is yes here. All of the items are no or small impact though. The proposed action may, may impact soil classified within soil group one through four of the New York State Land Classification System, no. The proposed action may sever or cross otherwise limited access to agricultural land, the answer is no. The proposed action may result in the excavation or compaction of soil profile of the active agricultural land, the answer is no. The proposed action may irreversibly convert agricultural land to non-agricultural uses either more, either more than two point five acres if located in an ag district or more than ten acres if not, the answer is no. The proposed action may disrupt or prevent the installation of, and, in agricultural land management system, the answer is no. The proposed action may result directly or indirectly in increased development potential or, or pressure on farmland, the answer is no. The proposed project is not consistently the, the adopted municipal farmland protection plan, the answer is no. Impact on aesthetic resources, the land use of the proposed action are obviously different from or are in sharp contrast to the current land use patterns between the proposed project and a scenic or aesthetic resource, the answer is no. Impact on historic and agriculture resources, the proposed action may occur in or adjacent to historic or archaeological resource, the answer is yes, it is in a sensitive area. The proposed action may occur wholly or partially within substantially contiguous to any buildings, archaeological site or district which is listed on the National or State Register of Historic Places or that has been determined by the Commissioner of New York State Office of Parks, Recreation and Historic Preservation to be eligible for listing in the State Register of Historic Places, the answer is no. The proposed actions may occur wholly or partially within or substantially contiguous to an area designated as a sensitive for agriculture, or, or, excuse me, archaeological sites in New York State Historic Preservation Office, CHIPO, archaeological site inventory, the answer is no. The proposed action may occur wholly or partially within or substantially contiguous to an archaeological site not included in the CHIPO inventory, the answer is no. Impact on open space and recreation, the proposed action may result in a loss of recreational opportunities or reduction of an open space resource designated in any adopted municipal open sort, open space plan, the answer is no. Impact on critical environmental areas, proposed action may be located within or adjacent to a critical environment area, the answer is no. Impact on transportation, the proposed action may result in a change to existing transportation systems, the answer is yes. The projected traffic increase may exceed the capacity of existing road network, the answer is no. The proposed action may result in the construction of a paved parking area for five hundred or more vehicles, the answer is no. The proposed action will degrade the existing transit access, the answer is no. The proposed action will degrade the existing pedestrian or bicycle accommodations, the answer is no. The proposed action may alter the present pattern of movement of people or goods, the answer is no. Impact on energy, the proposed action may cause an increase in use of any form of energy, the answer is yes. The proposed action will require a new or an upgraded, uh, to an existing substation, the answer is no. The proposed action will require the creation or extension of energy transmission or supply systems to serve more than fifty single or two-family residents or serve a commercial or industrial use, the answer is no. The proposed action may utilize more than two thousand five hundred megawatts, uh, megawatt hours per year of electricity, the answer is no. The proposed action may involve heating and or cooling of more than one hundred thousand square feet of building area uncompleted, the answer is no. The impact on noise, odor, and light, the proposed action may result in the increase in noise, odors, or outdoor lighting, the answer is yes. The proposed action may produce sound above the noise levels established by a local regulation, the answer is no. The proposed action may result in blasting within fifteen hundred feet of a residence, hospital, school, licensed daycare center, or nursing home, the answer is no. The proposed action may result in a routine odors for more than an hour a day, the answer is no. The proposed action may result in, in light shining on the adjacent properties or adjoining properties, the answer is no. The proposed action may result in lighting, creating sky glow brighter than existing area conditions, the answer is no. Impact on human health, the proposed action may have an impact on human health from exposure to new or existing sources of contaminants, the answer is no. The proposed, uh, consistency with the community plans, the proposed action is not consistent with the adopted plan, uh, adopted land use plans, the answer is yes. The proposed action, land use components may be different from or in sharp contrast to the current surrounding land or use patterns, the answer is no. The proposed action will cause permanent popu- uh, permanent population of the city, town, or village in which the, the project is located to grow by more than five percent, the answer is no. The proposed action is inconsistent with local land use plans or zoning regulations, the answer is no. The proposed action is inconsistent with any county plans or other, uh, regional land use plans, the answer is no. The proposed action may cause a change in the density of, of development that's not supported by existing infrastructure or is distant from existing infrastructure, the answer is no. The proposed action is located in the area characterized by, by low density development that will require new or expanded public infrastructure, the answer is no. The proposed action may induce secondary development impacts, uh, residential, commercial, or, or commercial development not included in that proposed action, the answer is no. The consistency with community character, the proposed action is inconsistent with the existing community character, the answer is yes. The proposed action may replace or eliminate existing facility structures or areas of historic importance to the community, the answer is no. The proposed action may treat a demand for additional community services, the answer is no. The proposed action may displace affordable low-income housing in the area where there's a shortage of such housing, the answer is no. The proposed action may interfere with the use or enjoyment of officially recognized or designated public resources, the answer is no. The proposed action is inconsistent with the predominant agricultural scale and character, the answer is no. The proposed action is inconsistent with the character of existing natural landscape, the answer is no. Based on that, um, we can give it a negative declaration.
Okay, entertain a motion for negative declaration. All right, Paul?
I'll make that motion.
Second. All right, Paul, roll call please, Ken.
Yeah, I prefer you then. Um, it probably would be, because it's not, wasn't attached as the original supporting document for the seeker part one, but I would suggest that including the updated engineering report as supporting documentation for essentially all the answers that Paul went through, then essentially this gets attached to the seeker.
Okay, so we have the updated engineering documentation, we also have the, uh, the traffic study.
The traffic study.
That can be included here.
Yeah.
Along, and I believe the engineering report and, um, engineering documentation plus the, the market rate as, uh, the rental rate.
Yeah, it describes everything, uh, that he's paying, provided previous.
Okay, so those, uh, engineering report and the, uh, traffic study, is that, is that finalized now, I have the draft version?
Yes.
The final traffic study will be included, uh, for pass through. And, and they came back and said, no significant adverse traffic in FedEx projected from the project.
Yeah.
So those two documents included with seeker, uh, Paul? Entertain a motion for approval.
I'll entertain a motion.
Paul McCullough for the second. Now, roll call please, Ken.
Paul Marquesi.
Yes.
Paul McCullough.
Yes.
Brittany, yes. Don?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes. All right, thank you. Uh, this project requires a subdivision, uh, for Met Tech, uh, anybody want to, from the developer, want to speak on subdivision required for this project? Do you, do you have any comments on that?
No, it's just, it's a very straightforward subdivision or re-subdivision, just to carve out the area for the, um, the new apartment complex. And, you know, if you do entertain approval, you know, both for the resub and site plan approval, I would do a contingent on final engineering review and approval. There are a couple surveying things, we just have to make sure that are, you know, right before the map is filed.
We did review this last time we met, uh, with the developer, any, any questions from the board, any comments? I'll entertain a motion for, uh, approval of the subdivision, uh, for the project, contingent on final engineering for, uh, recommendation by Steve.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call please, Ken.
Paul McCullough.
Yes.
Brittany, yes. Don?
Yes.
Paul Marquesi.
Yes.
Jonathan.
Yes. Uh, this project, it did go to county planning, uh, they recommended approval with modifications, uh, required modifications for the applicant, uh, as I think worked with the highway department and, uh, GCC to provide safe pedestrian crossing on College Drive, uh, they also required that, uh, nine-one-one address to be submitted to the sheriff's office, uh, upon completion of the project. Any comments on the, uh, the approval modifications from the, from the county planning board?
Yeah, I think on the pedestrian, you know, just because it's not, you know, college housing, um, we didn't see, our office didn't see any for, any additional pedestrian features for, for the project, only for the, you know.
I agree with that, helps, uh...
Yeah, I totally agree with that.
And we have worked with, uh, county highway, uh, the traffic end, uh, again, the studies came back with no impact for this project, but there are, um, accident histories, both the bank and Matavia Stanford Town Line Road, that, uh, they did make some recommendations which, you know, we in the county will investigate for, for future projects.
All right. All right, this project is in a planning unit development, uh, zoned area, uh, residential was not included originally with the, the zoned area, uh, planning development. By resolution, the Town Board did add it to and allow use by special use permit by the planning board, um, so I'd entertain a motion to, to grant special use permit, uh, to the applicant for this, for this project.
So move.
Paul?
Second.
Don? Roll call please, Ken.
Paul Marquesi.
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Paul McCullough.
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes. Site plan review and approval, um, I think the boards reviewed this in depth, uh, we had the presentation by, by Mr. Mazur. Are there any more comments or corrections, or, uh, comments on the project, discussion on the project? As Steve stated before, we'll, we'll entertain approval of the site plan, we'll do a contingent on final engineering review and approval. Any other recommendations to the board, Steve?
No, they've done a very good job addressing all of our comments, there's just a few things on water services and some other things we've got higher now, but other than that, it looks good.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for site plan approval.
Is that contingent enough on final engineering?
Correct.
Right. I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second, the Paul, roll call please, Ken.
Brittany, yes. Paul McCullough.
Yes.
Paul Marquesi.
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes. All right, um, thanks for coming in tonight, uh, work with, uh, engineering and county department to finalize your project.
Thank the board for all your time and effort on the site.
Thank you. All right, second item on the agenda is, uh, initial project presentation by GNC Biogas, um, we asked some representatives from GNC Biogas to be here tonight, just to do another review of the project, we, we have seen this project a couple of different iterations before.
You have. You could probably give it a just like...
So if you could, uh, just introduce yourself to the board, um, and then if you want to start your presentation.
I'm trying to stand right now.
You can move up. Yeah, come on up.
I think you've even seen these before too, so this is going to be really redundant, but, uh, I'm not sure. All right, so the, our, our, we are proposing to build a, a biogas plant on the ag park to serve primarily the ag park tenants, uh, provide them with an environmental solution. We, uh, this project will take in, take off the road about four to five thousand cars worth of carbon each year, uh, and that's all based on the waste coming off of the ag park and OAKA, uh, when we production. So as you can see, parcel that, uh, G C E D C had identified for us, a twenty acre parcel, of which we need a very small portion of it, uh, but that was the important thing with parcel. We oriented it to be up against this tree line in the back corner and, uh, putting all operations so that it's hidden from view and, uh, contained in the back corner of the facility. You can see it's in close proximity, obviously, um, to, to Hood, Upstate Niagara, and also to OAKA. And hopefully there'll be some future growth, uh, in the ag park that we can also help to, to serve. Um, right now, the growth plans of these ag park, uh, tenants will be able to support their waste management needs and provide renewable energy, um, in the area. An answer, any, any other questions?
Any questions from the board?
Most water are you getting?
Only daily. Uh, very little, actually, uh, it really just potable water for, uh, probably one or two onsite bathrooms and maybe a, a rinsing station, like a, a shower, just for, just for urgency needs, not for regular shower.
Right.
Yeah, it's a liquid system and most of the waste coming from the ag park are yogurt based or, or dairy based, so liquid is disturbed with, so it's not a, a big water drop.
So is there going to be any solids being brought in from outside of the park, like starter solids, uh, brewer, or anything like that coming into this?
Yeah, so the ag park, uh, G C E D C had asked us to not bring in any, any manures, this is a purely food waste, and we will use some di- digesting, which is, uh, post-digest- post-digestion and post, um, uh, pasteurized material from our other plant, but no, uh, no raw material from the site.
And the final waste product, what will happen with that?
So, uh, right now at our facility in, um, in Wyoming, it's used as a fertilizer, and that's our intent here, it has a very high nutrient content because it's food waste, uh, so it has a lot of nutrient value. The price of fertilizer going up largely because of the trade, the, uh, this byproduct can be used as fertilizer. We also have used it as bedding also, when we've tried, so if there's an interest in that, you basically will go back to farm use, a very, uh, recycling the nutrients in the products whenever we can.
So is that an additional part of the project?
It's, it's already...
A drying station and all that kind of stuff?
It's not a drying station, it, but it's, it's, uh, already included in the existing design, so within this existing footprint, that's already part of our plan, is to do some solid separation, uh, and, um, you can use like a screw press, uh, there's no act- no heat required to do that, you just run a press to basically squeeze it. A, a lot of farms do that now, uh, anyway, but we wouldn't be doing it similarly, uh, food based, base product, as opposed to a mineral based product.
What kind of volume do you need to operate efficiently?
Uh, the throughput, well, our system is based on throughput of about hundred, ten thousand gallons a day.
A day?
A day, yeah. And, and...
Where are you beginning that?
Uh, majority coming from right here.
The OAKA produces quite a lot, okay?
They do, yeah, absolutely do.
Is the OAKA going to be your biggest buyer then?
Uh, well, between OAKA and Upstate, although Hood's giving them a run for other money, so it's, it depends, and there's some seasonality to it, it depends on whose growth plans go through the fastest, so they're very close, I guess.
Well, Hood only has about two truckloads, every two weeks, about a truckload a week.
Uh, Hood brings their waste to us every day, so we take the waste from these ag park tenants, we're already serving them, we're taking them all the way down to Synergy, to our plant, which was built on a farm and primarily was, uh, designed to handle manure. And we serve the two thousand cows there, and so we've been bringing in additional food waste from the ag park already, and the idea was to locate it here so that they could have pipable or, or extremely short haul, uh, solution as opposed to driving these trucks every day down.
Are you taking it to no-bulvers?
No, we have a, we have a digester that we've been running for about twelve years, actually our plant manager, Ron Coy, who lives in Matavia... Actually, our plant manager, Ron Coy, who lives in Batavia, he runs that facility. It's adjacent to Synergy Farm and we call it Synergy Biogas in Wyoming County. So we've been doing this for about 12 years. It's the same design, except this one will have a lot more bells and whistles because it's in the ag park. That one was designed really to handle manure, but the designs, the Danish designers, about 50 in the world operating, most of them in Europe, a few in Asia and the ones that we run.
So OAKA is going to be your biggest supplier?
It depends. It depends. It's somewhere between OAKA and Hood.
Well, Hood, Hood don't have, they only have a truckload of wheat.
But they don't, they bring, but they may say that, but they, they don't. They bring at least one load every single day, usually it's three or four.
From Hood?
Yes.
Three loads a day.
Yeah, right now Hood is probably our biggest customer, but OAKA has a lot of growth and then they've got the Upstate Niagara as a, that has a little bit less product but right now, but is headed towards that direction with their growth plans.
So the solid separation, is that continuous, a continuous process or is it just when the digester resets?
Well, the digester is biological, we don't add anything to it. It's basically decomposition and the absence of oxygen, so the digester runs continuously. And the solid separation, I don't know how often we run it. Right now, we're running, yeah, pretty much you run it all the time at Synergy.
Twenty-four over the day we're running.
Yeah.
So is that a continuous haul, haulway then?
There would be, there would be ways to go out every day, yes.
How many loads is that typically?
It depends on the volume that day, probably between 10, 10 to 15 range.
Okay.
But again, it's, it's all the volume from, you know, the jury that I'm expecting. But, and also we do have some ability to store on-site, so we don't have to run it all hours, all the time. We can orient it to whatever traffic pattern makes the most sense.
So since there could be a potential storing the byproduct, what about odors coming out of there?
So this, this system is a great question. This system designed in Denmark, they build them in the towns actually, and they actually have heat loops and they're much more energy efficient and environmental than the US has even gotten to. But they have, in this design is a two-stage biofilter and it's a closed system and there's negative pressure that draws from the different parts of the process. So the air is being basically sucked back into this closed biofilter. It's a two-stage system to contain the odors. And it's all a closed system, so taking in these wastes through camlock fitting so it's not exposed to the air. And there's no, there's no open lagoon storage, not, not like a farm where you would have that storage. That's not how this is designed. There's just buffering built into the system in tanks. You see a lot of little circles. Those are all different tanks.
So, so when the byproduct leaves the facility, obviously it's going to be in some sort of semi-trucker or hauler truck. Is it, probably the wrong word used, inert at that time where there's not going to be odors as the trucks are leaving?
Yeah, so it will, it will have been pasteurized and digested. So the volatile solids is, comes down to a very low threshold and the volatile solids percentage is what drives the odor. So once it goes through pasteurization, like a milk pasteurization step, we do 160 degrees for an hour and it runs through a continuous process, then we digest it for 21 days. So the volatile solids content comes way down and that's what drives the odors.
Any other questions or comments? This project did go to the zoning board for height variance approval, which was granted. I know tonight we're not taking any action on the project, just initial presentation. You'll work with the engineering department for final submission.
We did, we have a couple, couple renderings we can show you. Just that we've oriented, again, this is the whole parcel, but the part that we would be using it pushing in as far up into that back corner against the tree line as we can. The highest piece is 83, 83 and a half feet, but obviously, you know, if you're looking at the size of our facility relative to our neighbors, it's very, very small and, and they've had height variance, I think it was 120, 125 feet roughly, so we're, we're much shorter than that. That's sort of closer look at the size.
All right. Thank you everybody for coming in tonight to discuss the project. Steve, do you have any comments?
Here, just to add a couple of things, I think we've met before. You know, we are working on, we start a capacity with the city and that's, you know, will be ongoing. One of the things that they proposed in an interim was to, you know, land spread the, you know, the waste that can't be used as fertilizer or direct, you know, sell or, or whatnot. So that's one thing we have to look at. Being an energy project, similar to our other energy projects, you know, we may want to consider, you know, decommissioning of something changes, you know, and, you know, their accounts are lost or it's not viable anymore. We want to make sure that something can be done with it. And similar to the other energy projects where we require host community agreements. So all those things will have to be discussed as we move through the process. I think the only other item is that, and we'll, we'll be facing this with HP Hood shortly too, on one of their, you know, upcoming applications, is, this is part of the original ag park environmental review, which was done in our, or environmental impact statement. So this will be a supplemental to that impact statement as opposed to, you know, the secret, similar to what you just did with the housing project. It'll be different. It'll be updating the, the original environmental impact statement, so, but we'll work through that process also.
Here, I take that, the biogas and generate electricity on the zone or?
We actually, we could do that, but actually the National Fuels has the, the gas pipeline is right here and they, they want to take the gas and so then it'll be used locally as, as natural gas, replacement to do natural gas, through a renewable natural gas source.
I think that's cool.
It could go, and it could, it could go electricity.
You might have to go electric.
That's, that's an interesting differentiation. Nobles definitely generates power up there, so.
Yeah, so you can, you can do, we do electricity at our Synergy Biogas site and, and just by, by location and their interest in having, and the demand in the Batavia area for natural gas, and they're right here, so the interconnection just made sense. But we could also do electricity, the technology is obviously there, we've done it for 12 years at our other facility, it just depends on, yeah. It's basically producing the biogas, so it's a renewable energy source and if you use it as electricity or as natural gas, it's, it's still environmental. We've gotten support from state and some, you know, environmental groups for, for this type of work.
Bob Kiefer, one of the engineers that's working on the project. Steve, you've done some approvals of projects that had, that required decommissioning plan. Can you provide us with some examples of that?
Yep.
It's a relatively new thing for me to have that as a condition of approval. Yeah, we, yeah, we'll provide an example of host community agreement and the decommissioning, all of which we'll have to, you know, sit down at the table and work through that together. It'll be a little bit different. Again, this is our first biogas facility, so it'll be different than the other ones. Same, but if it was an idea of what the process is. Yes, thank you.
What's the timeframe on this?
Last year.
Yeah. And sort of up, up to you all and Steve, the process.
Steve, what are you thinking?
Process we're going through.
Time frame.
What's that?
Time frame on this.
I think, I mean, if they address all of our comments, which we're close to getting that on a comment letter together, you know, should be able to come, you know, to the board. EIS updating process will take, I think, a couple of months. And then the wastewater issues, the one we've got to get through too, that's, you know, one of the big ones. You know, the, I mean, right now you don't have any signed options or commitments from the other businesses.
The customers?
Yes.
We do, because we handle the waste now. And some are in renegotiation or, you know, updating or negotiating. They're current customers, so that misses out a little.
Do you have a term for how long that is or?
Well, many of them are very long. I probably can't say.
Yeah, which is fine. I mean, that's obviously something that, you know, it's got to be viable or you don't build it, right?
Right. Absolutely, absolutely. And we've been working with these customers since.
A long time.
Yeah, 2011, so we have a very good, long history of handling their various wastes over time. And we do, you know, the land application that Steve was talking about, we permit that every year with DC, so we're very familiar with the nutrient management aspect of the, of the byproduct.
So hopefully the farmer may be able to get his corn, corn off before you start constructing.
Corn looks very good, very high this year.
Great. Any other discussion? All right, thanks Ken for coming in tonight. We look forward to seeing your project as you work through the engineering.
Thank you very much.
What do you think?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, zoning office report, Dan's now with us tonight. Steve? Steve, do you have anything, do you know if Dan had anything for the board tonight?
No, I don't know. You know, you have the information meeting for country meadows. I don't know if the board, you know, we're kind of formulating some things and ideas to, you know, make it work for everybody. Obviously, the existing homes need infrastructure upgrades, but without income, you know, the upgrades can't happen, so it's, again, that chicken and the egg. So I think there, you know, there's probably ways to look at, again, if the board gets to a point where they can make a decision, yes or no, if it's yes, then, you know, if there's conditions such that they have to do X, Y, and Z, you know, based on sales and that sort of thing. Hopefully it's a win-win and good for everybody.
Yeah, I hit that on my chairman report. You know, we went over, we had that information meeting. It seemed like a lot of comments were mainly maintenance and management of the existing facility there. It did seem like there were some opportunities for reinvestment plans. You know, Mr. Cook expressed that that was his plan to, to invest and build into a new, new park and then he can invest the money into the old park. Like Steve mentioned, I think as a board, we should probably build that into the approval just to make sure that, that gets worked in the project. And then there's some other infrastructure improvements that will be needed initially with the project, you know, being accesses off from, from Clint Street.
Wrong.
Yeah, just for emergency apparatus, construction, make sure those roads don't fall apart during construction, but we can discuss that with the, with Mr. Cook to see, see where he's at with that. The reinvestment plan, is that something that we would initiate through the planning board?
I think, again, it kind of gets through the, similar to the biogas, it's a, you know, it's, it's a great project, needed project, but it needs to be environmentally sound and it's got to be viable. So we have to make sure, you know, from a town standpoint that, you know, the services, everything is in a balance and similar to that project. So it, to me though, the only, you know, we've talked about it before, the secret process, the socio-economical aspect of secrets where, you know, you look for making those conditions so that you're assured that it, it does, does happen. That's really, it is through the planning board. You know, the town board, you know, could initiate a conversation for an HCA and some other things, but we'll have to work through what the best mechanism, but at the very least, conditions, you know, through the secret review process is the best way to do it.
Okay. We could discuss that with Cook management, just to see when they, if they'd like to come back to the planning board for review approval.
Yep.
Based on those conditions and then we can discuss it as a board then. All right, Sharon, anything from the town board?
No.
Okay. That's all I have tonight. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
Don, second?
Second.
Brittany?
Yes.
All in favor?
All right.
All right, thank you.